Good afternoon, everybody. The time is 5:56 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Capella City Council. There is a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. We'll be convening into executive session in the first floor conference room. At the end of the executive session, I will come out and announce that we are entering into work session, at which time the public will be invited and encouraged to attend. Thank you very much. The time is 6:59 PM. We have adjourned from executive session, and we're moving into work session in the first floor conference room. The public is invited and encouraged to join us. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everybody. The time is 7:02 PM. We're going to move into work session. We only have two agenda items. The first one is the discussion on the agenda items for the regular session. Does anybody have any questions or comments about our agenda now? Seeing none, we're going to move on. Item B is discussion regarding generators in residential areas. Mr. Schubert's going to walk us through this one. Just a little background, we've had a complaint from a citizen that it was asking for an agenda item, and staff in preparation for that went out and has done some surveys and some studies, and Steve is going to present that to us.
Good evening, Mayor. As stated, staff has asked for important presentation regarding residential backup generators and the noise they produce. These generators only engage when there's well power supplied by the provider, so nobody has electricity, backup generators can't. This presentation, nice and short, just a three-hour presentation, is to give an overview of backup generators and the regulations associated with them in Capella and for our comparison. You just got this. This initiative of February 2021 freeze, commonly referred to as SNOVID, is courtesy of the Capella Student Union. This freeze caused massive electrical outages all across the state, and in some places, it lasted for up to two weeks. Lack of power for such an extended period of time in such extreme temperatures was linked to significant losses and damages throughout North Texas. This sparked a drastic increase in residential generator installations. In the five years prior to the freeze, our municipality issued 32 residential generators. Since that freeze, just a little over three years, 114 complaints have been made.
I'm sorry, you said 32 prior to your, like in history?
In six years prior to SNOVID, we had 32. This list of average decimal levels is in courtesy of Department of Defense website dedicated for reservation of hearing. It's called Hearing Center of Excellence. As you can see here, the gas lawnmower generates approximately 94 decibels. The same lawnmower at 10 feet away is about 73, roughly about the same as the Generac 25 kilowatt residential natural gas generator. That is the most common generator installed in our municipality. This page is from a recent permit submitted. The location of a backup generator on someone's property is a significant factor in the cost of the installation. Depending on the system, there are three or more wires from the generator to the panel. In this picture, that is represented by the red line. You've got the generator down at the bottom, and that red line goes all the way up to their electrical meter and where they're going to put in the first means of disconnect. Those wires, on average, cost about $6 per linear foot, and there are probably four or more of those going all that way. So it runs up the cost significantly if someone tries to locate the generator even further away from the meter, tries to kick it back and further into the property. In this particular instance, they decided to try and keep it close to the gas meter. The cost for these installations provided on perm applications are anywhere from $10,000 to over $24,000, the cost being based on specific equipment and distances from the electrical connections and the natural gas connection at the unit. Cost considerations certainly affect someone's decisions on where to place the generator on their property. By ordinance, residential backup generators are treated the same as any residential equipment, like your HVAC condensing unit outside your house, pool equipment, things of that nature. Couple of requirements are that they cannot be located in the front yard, and they must be screened from view of the public way. On this plan, that generator would be visible from a public way, that little curvature on the far right, that would be the front sidewalk and everything. So it would have to be screened from public view, whether it's by fence, shrubbery, what After community development received an inquiry in December of 2023 regarding residential backup generators and the noise they produce, city staff performed a review of how our comparison cities are regulating generators. City staff also verified that those findings had not changed since December. It was verified as recently as Monday. Just as here in the city of Capella, comparison cities treat them the same as any residential equipment, with one exception. City of Carrollton has an ordinance amendment specifying that residential backup generators are exempt from their noise regulations. That's the only difference from any other municipality. This is a short video in which we have an opportunity to hear the noise level of a generator. The video does open up with some ambient noise, such as a leaf blower in the background, but it at least gives us a good idea for reference on the sound comparison. The model generator in here is the same manufacturer as almost all the residential backup generators installed in our cities, so it gives us a pretty good idea of the sound to be expected.
I'm Nick, here with Trail Electric. I'm one of the private managers here, and also handle our generator sales and service. We're out here at home in Mount Pleasant, just recently installed this generator, this is a 22 KW Generac, a Guardian series generator. We installed quite a few generators, and coming up on hurricane season, circling the city. One question I get asked a lot is how loud are they? And that's a very good question. We have some other noises around us here today, but I want you to hear what this thing sounds like as it goes. Go ahead and turn on the generator. There it is right there. As you can see, I control it over top of this generator. It's pretty much strong. They run at about 70 decibels. This is 100% noise, and this is as loud as the generator will ever get. But it doesn't take so much time, it actually runs at a lower RPM, it's actually quieter. It runs at a single RPM, stays single all the time. That gives you a good idea of the sound. I'll go ahead and turn on.
So, as stated in the video, the volume of that generator was at full load. That means it's running at full capacity, providing all the power it can possibly provide at one time. So if somebody has this hooked up at their house, heat kicks on as electric heat, it's going to ramp up, it's going to kick in at full blast until the heater kicks off, then it'll drop back down into basically just idle speed. Now, for anyone interested in such a thing, there are options to be able to muffle the sound of the generator. However, the options to do so is limited. Such muffler housing is not something you can build yourself from materials available at Lowe's, Home Depot, or Ace Hardware. It has to be an actual listed assembly, which means that the manufacturer of the muffler system worked with the manufacturer in order to create something that would work with the equipment and prevent the equipment's warranty from being expired, or from the equipment experiencing critical heat failure, any manner of things. So, this particular example, it's an exceedingly short video, but it at least provides us an example of the sound of the generator from before, and the sound of the generator with the muffling system in there. Now, the previous video, the camera was probably about six foot away from the generator. In this video, you can see they're probably about 25, maybe 30 feet away from the generator, so it's a little bit further away. Before and after. Before and after. So there is a recognizable difference in the noise level. Whether or not it's still, you know, quiet enough to not be discernible from somebody else's property, I think so. Now, one of the things that we wanted to make sure that everybody is aware of is, should anyone be inclined to pursue changes to our city ordinance for generators, it would not affect any of the generators that are currently in operation in our city. Anything that was previously reviewed, approved, and installed on someone's property is going to remain exactly as it is until, you know, 30 years from now when they go to replace the equipment. So if someone is wanting to make changes, it would only affect anything that is permitted after the date that the ordinance is changed. And that's it. Anybody have any questions?
So the question for us is very simple. Do we want to do it? Do you want to move forward with anything, or just let it? You know, we have existing ordinances concerning the installation of generators. We have now sound ordinances. Kevin?
I would not like to change anything.
Thank you for your opinion.
Yeah, I don't care.
Well, you're grandfathered, so.
Well, I know. But the thing is, like, for one thing, they're enormously expensive to install.
They are.
So we had ours installed, we've got the 24 kilowatt Generac. We had ours installed the spring, fall, and snow again. And, you know, just to kind of, for historical perspective, I looked at getting one in '08, the year after we moved in, and I looked at those specs that I had, I found them, compared to the specs on the new one. The new one's half the size and almost two-thirds quieter, so I was kind of glad we waited. In the two years that we've had it, other than a few intermittent, you know, like 30-minute, you know, segments, it wasn't until about a week ago, or whenever that storm hit, that it ran from 5:30 in the morning until 10:30 at night. And, I don't know, my neighbor hooked up a little portable one, and his was louder than mine was. So I just, I think it's, to me, the difficulty in trying to draft an ordinance that somehow would control what you do is, number one, like the master bedrooms, different homes are not always going to be right up next to where the generator is. I don't know how staff would ever figure out how to enforce something, depending on, you know, all those kind of variables. And then the other thing, too, is that, you know, there's certain logistical problems with having them. I mean, we were lucky because our gas meter, our smart meter, and our fuse boxes were all at the exact same location of the house. But I've had plenty of friends looking at getting one, but like the gas lines, the gas meter's all the way over there, so we've got to run gas line, you know, 60 feet, and that's just, it's just too expensive. So I'm not sure, other than, you know, this one individual that's concerned about it, I'm not really sure that it's a problem. So I don't want to run around being a hammer looking for a nail.
Ramesh?
I agree with Councilmember Walker. If it is one person that is complaining, I think we should probably wait till we're interested.
The only thing I'll sort of add, I'm not in favor of looking to do anything different, but the only thing I would add is, unfortunately, they kick on in abnormal times to begin with. It's a, it's a, it's a not normalized environment when they are on. And, and I get it, I would probably hate a lawnmower outside my bedroom window, but I also hate it when I don't have electricity for 12 hours also. So I just think, I don't know that we need to put in, try to thread a needle with some regulation for a situation that's sort of at an abnormal time when they even operate.
So we did, like Jim did, after snow, storm again, we went out and bought one. Well, I didn't buy a permanent one, I bought a temporary one. Well, there's no, there's no way that our code would apply to what I bought.
Yours is probably louder.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's, I measured it at 75 dB from my street, not 10 or 20 feet away from the street, and I had it sitting outside our garage, so it was probably 30, 30, 35 feet away.
Yeah, and it's still 75.
Yeah, and, and sound attenuates 6 dB every time you double the distance, so it's, it's a 70, anyway.
If I can add to that. So the backup generators, their motors are designed to be inside that housing, and that housing, that enclosure already comes with some sound bath leak. The backup generators, little portable ones, 99% of those are actually motorcycle engines. That's why you'll see the manufacturers such as Yamaha, Suzuki, you recognize the names from motorcycles and dirt bikes.
Well, mine was, I actually bought a Generac, and it's a 10 kilowatt. So it's, it's about half the size of the one Jim has, but it's probably twice as noisy. So Bijou?
Can you please remind us, what is the existing ordinance today?
Right now, they're treated just as any other residential equipment, so the condensing unit for your HVAC system, pool equipment, anything like that. It has to be in either the side or rear yard, and it has to be screened from view from a public way. So if somebody's side yard faces a major street, well, even in the side yard or the backyard, under the circumstances, they've got a ride iron fence, they'd have to put in some form of screening for the generator. Aside from that, nothing.
And we don't have, our current ordinances don't provide for location for equipment like a swimming pool equipment. My next door neighbor put in a swimming pool equipment, put the pump and filter literally 10 feet from our bedroom window, and I was freaking out. The stuff is so quiet, we never even hear it. So.
So the ask is to change the location where this will be installed?
Well, certainly, there's a lot of different options, but it ultimately comes down to pursuing possibilities of mitigating the sound.
Mark?
You know, there's, there's more than just comfort involved with, you know, having a generator. I mean, there are people who have oxygen generators, and they need those to breathe. And there's people who have home dialysis. Now, I don't know how many people in Capella do, but I imagine it's more than, probably more than the people that have generators. And those people are just kind of, you know, running, you know, rolling the dice that they're not going to be in trouble. But the only thing I think we ought to consider is, you know, they classify the gen sets as, as an open set or an enclosed set, and open sets are more like the, the ones that are movable, like you have, Wes, but they do make them that are open and, you know, standby generators, and they're typically gas-powered, and they're super loud, and those would be the only ones we could really affect code-wise. But like you said, we're not going to be able to do a portable gen like you have, so.
It weighs 300 pounds.
Yeah, so it's not important.
So it'd be hard to enforce, right? To have that location.
It'd be, I mean, mine resides inside my house, away from sight. I've owned it for four years now, and I've used it once, which was two weeks ago, for an hour. So yeah, it'd be almost impossible to enforce. The idea about requiring a permanent one to be an enclosed is not a bad, bad idea.
Yeah, I just don't think you want an open gen set, because they're like 125 decibels. But I think people are not inclined to put that in on their property because they know how much it's gonna, how much noise it's gonna make.
Don't think of them just as.
Yeah, exactly. Because it's closer to their house.
And they're going to weather much quicker, Jim.
But it sounds like that would already violate the ordinance we have, if we have a noise level.
Well, if these are portable generators, then we have nothing.
No, if it was a standby, a permanent standby, that was an open.
I have not seen one come through in permitting.
Yeah.
All of them are enclosed, it's either Kohler or Generac.
Yeah, and those are the big players, and I just don't think any people are looking at, I mean, there is a cost savings to have the gasoline versus the natural gas, but I don't think anybody's ever going to really want to pull a permit for that, so I don't think we need to exclude them. Now, if we saw a big run on them, I don't think we would.
Well, out of more curiosity, the, one that I use for an example of the before and after with the enclosure around it, we looked at the pricing for the enclosure. After-tax is about $3,000, and that does not include assembly. So if you're already dropping $10,000 for a generator install, and a third of that cost gets added on just to put a baffle house around it, now you're looking at anywhere possibly $14,000, $15,000 just putting a closure around it.
So I've heard about noise abatement kits for the generators, and I was assuming that they were just talking about an extended, larger muffler.
Well, Generac does have an option of additional mufflers that you can purchase to try and help mitigate sound, but when it comes to actual enclosures, Generac does not manufacture them, neither does Kohler, it's all third-party. And they went to the trouble of getting their stuff listed through the UL, you know, just like, you buy only have it that has the sticker on the cord that says UL, and it gives a number.
So I'm hearing we're going to stay status quo. All right. Thank you very much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
All right, the time is 7:22 PM. We're at the end of work session, and we will convene into regular session of the Capella City Council at 7:30. City Council at 7:30.
All right. Let's get on time.
I see a visual there.
Yeah.
Mark.
Mark.
What time do you tell them to start?
7:30. Well, he's young. It shouldn't take him that long.
Now, you're, I got him. No, all is good.
Good afternoon, everybody. The time is 7:31 PM. We're here for the Capel City Council. We do have a quorum present and we've already called the meeting to order. Our first item of business is the invocation, which is going to be given by Andrea Sukka with Allies Interface Group. Andrea?
Thank you. I'm sharing a prayer for our country that includes our elected leaders, and this is from the Jewish faith. Let me put my, "Our God and God of our ancestors grant to our country the will and wherewithal to fulfill its calling to justice, liberty, and equality. May each of us fulfill our responsibilities of citizenship with care, generosity, and gratitude, ever conscious of the extraordinary blessing of freedom, ever mindful of our duties to one another. Bless those who volunteer to labor on behalf of us all. May they find the strength and courage to complete their tasks and fulfill their dreams. May our judges, elected leaders, and all who hold public office exercise their responsibilities with wisdom, fairness, and justice for all. Fill them with love and kindness and bless them that they may walk with integrity on the paths of peace and righteousness. Creator and protector of all, watch over our armed forces and all those entrusted with our safety as they daily put their lives at risk to protect us and our freedoms. Be with them in times of danger. Give them courage to act with honor and dignity as well as the insight to do what is right in your eyes. Fill all of us with the gifts of love and courage that we may create a world that reflects your glory. May we each respond to the charge for what does Adonai," that's God in Hebrew, "demand of you, but to act justly, to love with kindness, and to walk humbly with your God. May the one who brings peace on high bring peace and prosperity to our world and keep us in safety. Amen."
Thank you. Now, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Okay. Item number six is our citizens' appearances. And as a reminder, any persons wishing to speak during our citizens' appearance or the public hearings must sign the appropriate register outside the council chambers and list your residence address. Persons wishing to speak, our presentations may be made for two minutes each and individual speaker time may be extended for an additional two minutes with the approval of the majority of the council members present. Person signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks, but any speakers shall be made against any member of the council, mayor, individual, group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberation from the city council due to the Texas Open Meetings Act. Once the timer sounds at two minutes, the city secretary or mayor will cut in and make the request, the city council, if they would like to extend the speaker's time for an additional two minutes. We do have three people that have signed up to speak tonight. First on the list, and I'm gonna, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble with the handwriting, but I believe the last name is Farley. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello. My name is Nafisa Shakira Farley, and yes, my handwriting is not that good. And I live at 780 Crestview Court. And I will, I may need a little bit over two minutes, just so you know, but I have practiced and practiced to try to get it in the two minutes, so.
We appreciate that.
Okay. And so, first part is, you know, the second part is a little emotional, so please bear with me. So, I am coming before you today about Article 8-3, Section 6 and 7, which is, does not allow for truck drivers to park just their truck on residential property, even though there is a parking pad or ample parking for it. The city article says nothing over one and a half tons can park, but I'm asking for the city council and the mayor to look at the article and see if we can't come up with maybe like a permit system to allow our truck drivers who live in Capel to have a safe and affordable place to park that is out of the way and also generate revenue for the city. My next part is the city code violation system that we have, which is definitely needed, by the way. I'm not saying it's not needed. But my husband and I have been targeted and harassed by a person who does not live in our alley, who continuously makes false reports about us parking our truck behind our home in our driveway. Yes, we were in the beginning. We did not know it was against city code. And then, once it was reported, the city code team, which is amazing, has worked with us to help my husband and I find a place to park that was safe and affordable. But in the city of Capel, there is no place to park. And so, they gave us some time to find a spot, but this person kept reporting, reporting, even making false reports, emailing not only the city council, but you, the mayor, on the reports. I don't know who the person is because they have the safety of being anonymous to me, so I don't know who it is. They've, most, 90% of the time, they did not post any pictures. They said we were storing trucks in our backyard, which we can't do. They said that we were, we were doing a lot of different things that we were not. I have, I have no way of defending myself other than coming here and being on record that my husband and I are very responsible citizens. He is not parking the truck on parkway, on our parking pad at this point. We find all kinds of different places to do it. But having this article reviewed to see perhaps maybe if we can park it elsewhere.
Excuse me, council? Continue on.
Okay. Thank you. I do say that this person is targeting us because my husband is African-American and I am African-American. And I say this because there are several neighbors in my neighborhood who park their RVs, which weigh more than his truck, on their property, which I find, I think is fine. Also, I have several neighbors whose grass is like four foot tall, that never gets cut, nothing never happens to it. But for some reason, this person has chosen to target us. They did not target us for the first eight months that we lived there until they found out my husband was African-American. And it continues and continues. Even on Easter, they were mad that my husband was home on Easter. Easter, resurrection day. They would not let my husb, they would not let my husband be home because they so offended by him. And I needed to stop. And mayor, I know this person has emailed you personally, because I actually have the records that show it. I'm, I'm asking you to ask them to leave us alone. Like, I mean, the truck's not there, but they're gonna find something else and they will not stop until they find a way to get us out. And they're not getting us out because we love Capel. We love it. So just a review of the article and also to find a way with the reporting system when it becomes a harassment, if we can find a way to get the person to stop. Because once the city code violation crew is working with us, that should be enough. And they should not be allowed to continue the harassment. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Our second speaker is Josiah Hawkins.
Hello. My name is Josiah Hawkins. I live at 474 Harris here in Capel. And I'd like to request, respectfully request that the city council ensure that the Capel City Police Department patrol the neighborhood, because there are individuals who are speeding through the neighborhood and not stopping at stop signs. And I think this poses a safety challenge. We've lived in the town for a little over two years. And we live at the corner of Bethel School Road and Harris Street. And people speed through there and don't stop at that intersection. And we have children, and there are other young children in the neighborhood, and I don't think it's safe for my boys to ride their bikes in the street. I think it's unsafe because nobody abides by the laws. And I, my impression is, and I've seen folks, I think they're cutting through the neighborhood en route to the other side, perhaps to work at the postal service or Kroger or the big Amazon facilities, and speeding through there and not stopping at the intersection. I think there's been a general breakdown too, where workmen don't stop. And perhaps some of the people that live in the community as well. And I think this poses a challenge. And I'd like to respectfully ask, respectfully ask that you have a police presence there to maybe enforce the existing laws to ensure safety. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Our third speaker and last on my list is Mr. Jeff Moses.
My name is Jeff Moses. My address is 204 Wilshire Drive in Capel. I just wanted to address the council to try to get a clarification. I believe it's, it's Section 9-13-1, I believe, is regarding noise ordinance. I live on the back, the River Chase Golf Course backs up to my address. And I've had a problem, and I've called the city and different people, talked to them over the course. This has been going on for years, but basically, they seem to have no restrictions on what time they mow or do maintenance work on the golf course. This morning, it was eight minutes after six. They've been up as early as 10 minutes after five. I've lived there for 21 years and probably for the last, I'm just gonna say, five years even before COVID, this was a problem. I've talked to different people in the city and there seems to be a little vagueness regarding what they can and can't do. But nobody in my, of all the people that live in my neighborhood, nobody has a lawn crew that starts before seven or eight o'clock in the morning. But for some reason, in the front of my house, nobody starts from before seven or eight o'clock. But behind my house, they can start whenever they want and do whatever they want. They've actually had a gas-powered leaf blower going as early as 10 minutes after five. So I'm just trying to get a clarification because speaking, I've talked to code compliance and they said it's not really a code issue. I've talked to the police and they said, well, yes, it's a noise issue, but there seems to be some vagueness about what they can and cannot do. So I'm just asking for some clarification. Four days out of the week, I don't have a time that I have to get up and be to work, but basically every morning for nearly, I'm gonna say more than five years, I've been woke up long before seven o'clock in the morning. And this, once again, this morning, it was eight minutes after six. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time tonight. All right. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. This agenda is routine in nature and is generally enacted in one motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or past council actions. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are available on the screen. Council, do you have any questions or comments or care to pull a consent agenda item? Seeing none, I will accept a motion. Mayor Protem Nevels.
Thank you, mayor. I move to approve a consent agenda items A through C.
Thank you very much, and seconded by Councilmember Walker. All in favor?
Walker, Carroll, Nevels, Premkumar, Matthew, and Hill, all in favor? Motion carries.
Item number eight on the agenda is a public hearing, so I'm gonna open the public hearing and remind that any persons wishing to speak during this public hearing must sign the register outside the council chambers and list your address. Speakers will be called in the order that you signed up. We have nobody signed up to speak at this point, so I will turn the presentation over to Mr. Steer and ask him to read the item into the record.
Mayor, council, good evening. This is a public hearing to consider approval of a zoning change request from PD 297 RLI to PD 297 R2 LI to approve a new detailed site plan to add a canopy structure with an attached sign within the required front yard setback and to add a monument sign, a canopy at the northern entry, and mechanical equipment for an office warehouse building on 9.01 acres of property located at 1010 West Sandy Lake Road at the request of Wellbuilt Inc., being represented by Half Associates. So in November 2021, a larger zoning change request was approved. A component of that zoning change was for a detailed site plan for this office warehouse building on 9.01 acres of land. And also, they requested an amendment to the 2030 comprehensive master plan from freeway special district to industrial special district. As you can see, the building has already been constructed and is occupied by Wellbuilt. So this is a very simple request, but because it involves a setback encroachment and an addition of an attached sign to a canopy, we could not process the request administratively. The first of the items I'll go through with you is the front yard setback PD condition located on the Sandy Lake Road entrance. Specifically, this request is to allow a porticus share or canopy to encroach into the required 60-foot front yard setback. It's proposed to be set back approximately 34 feet from the West Sandy Lake Road right-of-way. This will be located just outside of the TPNL electric easement that runs parallel to Sandy Lake. Here are the existing building elevations and the proposed daytime elevations of the porticus share and the night elevations. They are also proposing attached signage on the west elevation. This is proposed to serve as a drop-off, a drop-off area for clients coming from out of town and from the airport and really enhances the entry of the office warehouse building. There's mechanical equipment proposed on the east side of the building dock area. This is proposed to be screened with solid metal enclosures. Speed humps are proposed to be located on the, in the drive aisle west of and in front of the building to prevent cut-through traffic from Sandy Lake to 121. These have been reviewed and are acceptable to our fire department. A small building canopy and signage are proposed at the northwest corner of the building. The canopy is shown in dark gray on the left image. And here are the existing and proposed elevations and the nighttime elevations. All materials are compatible with and complement the existing building. A 60-square-foot monument sign is proposed to be located on the State Highway 121 frontage. And this meets the requirements of the sign section of the zoning ordinance. And dwarf wax myrtles are proposed at the base. We sent out six notices within 200 feet, two courtesy notices within 800 feet, and we didn't have any responses in favor or opposition of the proposal. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval unanimously of the request, subject to the following PD conditions. One, that the front yard setback on West Sandy Lake Road shall be reduced to 34 feet at the proposed porticus share at the southwest building entrance. at the proposed porticusare at the southwest building entry. And two, the attached signage shall be allowed on the porticusare. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is in the audience as well.
Thank you very much, council. Do you have any questions for Mr. Steer? Councilmember Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Steer, for that presentation. This is awfully small ball, but we're asking to relocate that tree, and, you know, that's not always successful after it's relocated. Wouldn't it be easier just to ask them to, to plant a new tree instead of taking the risk that we end up with a dead tree that anyways?
Yeah. I think the tree is fairly new, so it's, it hasn't grown.
You think it, okay.
Yeah. So, it wouldn't be that difficult to move that one.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, does the applicant have anything to say? Not that you have to. All right. Well, I see no questions coming this direction. Council, with, based on the silence, I'll be willing to accept a motion. Councilmember Hill.
Yes, I make a motion to close the public hearing and approve item number eight with conditions.
Thank you, and seconded by Councilmember Matthews. All in favor?
Walker, Carroll, Nevels, Premkumar, Matthew, and Hill, all in favor, none opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number nine is a city manager report, project updates, future agendas, and direction from our work session. Mr. Lan.
Mayor, thank you. You may repeat what I'm about ready to say, but just as a reminder, we do not have a second meeting in the month of June, just as a reminder for council. Just some project updates. South Belt Line, again, the contractors continue to work on punch list items, that's why you see them out there. DART is continuing to work on franchise relocations at Freeport and the Storm Dane installation across Freeport. Wordhurst, the contractor has continued to install utilities and pour paving. The Andy Brown Park West Stream Bank repair, if you've noticed, the temporary repair is complete, and a temporary fence around the trail has been installed. And for Fire Station Number Five, the contractor began site work this past week. Just as an update on our storm water, a storm water, storm debris pickup, Crowder Golf has, of yesterday evening, had picked up about 25% of the resident storm debris. Currently, they're operating with two trucks. We all get a smile out of the response by the community about being excited to see a claw coming down their street, so it's pretty funny. One truck is operating from an east-to-west direction, the other is operating from a south-to-north. The amount of debris is actually higher than they initially estimated. Just to put in perspective, each truck is collecting slightly more than seven tons per day. They start at 7:00 AM and finish at 6:30. Based on the volume of debris, we identified that without additional resources, this effort's going to take much longer than the end of the month. We have been following behind the trucks at times, just to check and see what's going on, why the processes and progress is being made. So, we ask again emphatically, cars need to be placed away from the solid, from the debris. If it's parked in front of the debris, the claw will not pick up the debris. And there are, there are folks who have called us to ask us, well, what day is the debris going to be picked up? We cannot provide that to you. The best answer is, don't park your car in front of the debris. That way, that gives assurance that it'll get picked up. Also, one of the things about the debris, if you have it in, I'm gonna use the term smaller clumps, the claw, if you ever do get to see it in operation, actually works better with larger gatherings, if you will, of the debris. So, if you could maybe combine some of those smaller clumps to make them into a little bit larger clumps, that will help the process as well. Another thing that is happening is, as the trucks are going by and picking up the debris in the neighborhoods that they've picked up so far, there is backfilling going on. So, debris is getting put back out after we are already through a particular neighborhood. So, that is a little bit problematic, because it's going to be a long time before we get back to picking that up. So, if it's, again, in small enough debris, I have to tell you, please take it back to the alley bundled up, 40 pounds, four feet long. Another thing that's happening is, which is, again, perfectly fine, given that the storm happened, and we know that there are a lot of pears out there, the Bradford pears, but there's a lot of green trees, if you will, that are being cut and put out, which is also increasing the volume. So, people are taking advantage of this timeframe, which is fine, to reduce some of the exposure to their homes for some of these trees that weren't necessarily impacted by the storm, but since the initial assessment, that volume has also increased. So, it's just turning out to be a larger and larger project as we go through this. I was informed this evening that we are working with Crowder. I believe a third truck is going to be coming in, which is going to help tremendously. The other thing is with Crowder is their trucks are larger than Republic. So, one of the reasons why we've held off on Republic is because, one, Republic only has one truck, it's a smaller truck, and it can't haul as much. So, it's, while the cost is there for us to have Crowder, it's much more efficient and will happen in a more timely fashion. We are also considering some ways to reduce the amount of time that Crowder is actually not on the streets picking up waste in town. So, we're identifying possible locations for them to be able to put the debris and us to do some chipping. So, we're still evaluating that process, but it looks like that's something that we can, we're gonna try to do. Just for the public's knowledge, for five days worth of Crowder picking up waste, picking up solid, I don't wanna say solid waste, picking up debris, it's $36,000. So, they are going on their second set of five days. We can see them lasting through the end of the month at this point. So, council, I will be sending out an update with that here shortly, and will be addressing this through the July 9 council meeting. We appreciate the residents that have been patient with us. I debated whether or not to say this or not, but I'm gonna go ahead and say it. Our staff is doing the absolute best that they can do, and our residents generally have been extremely patient and gracious with us. There are some, though, that are calling that are downright ugly and rude and nasty. And so, we have said to the staff, you don't have to call those folks back. So, if you get a complaint that we haven't called someone back, I apologize in advance, but our staff has enough on their table to deal with and in serving this community. And like I said, it's a handful, but it's, it's just, just very disappointing, to say the least. And so, we appreciate the council's continued support, the community's continued support. We are working to get this picked up as quickly as possible. It's just a slow process. And putting the debris, the large debris, between the curb and the sidewalk is essential in order to have success in this, because that claw, we have instructed Crowder not to put that claw on the other side towards the residence of the sidewalk, because that is private property. And that's a big piece of machinery that's operating, and it could cause damage. And so, that is the reason why we're asking you to put it out towards the curb, because we don't want to damage your property. So, mayor, that concludes my report.
That was a mouthful. Thank you, on behalf of the council and the city, thank you for expediting the cleanup process. I don't think you're gonna have any complaints from anybody about that, so thank you. Item number 10 is mayor and council reports on recent and upcoming events. We've got a big party coming up. It's called Party in the Park, which is gonna be on June, Saturday, June 29, in Andy Brown Park East. Starting time will be 6:00 PM. And then, to celebrate the Independence Day, the Fourth of July Parade, we'll be having our parade down Parkway on July 4, starting at 9:00 AM. The Independence Day Parade will begin at Samuel Boulevard and Sandy Lake Road and travel north on Samuel to Parkway, then head west and terminate at Town Center. We had good news from, via the Capella Arts Center. We've once been nominated by the Dallas Morning News as best in the DFW in multiple categories. You can get more information and link your cast, your vote, by going to thecapellartscenter.org. This morning, I attended the Metroplex Mayor's Association Meeting, and the city of Dallas presented a report on their homeless situation. And the CEO of DART, Nadine Lee, was also there, addressing what they're doing to mitigate the migration of homeless from Dallas as DART continues to expand. I was not aware that Dallas has over 400 encampments in the, in their city limits, and so, they're taking a very close look at what they can do. The mayor of Carrollton, Mayor Babic, and I both volunteered to act in an advisory role for the outlying cities, and I look forward to working with the mayor on seeing what we can do to mitigate any type of homeless migration from downtown Dallas to our community as DART begins to roll out. And by the way, the expected date of that was early '26, so we're looking at about a year and a half away. Item number 11 is public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation permitted. Council, any public service announcements? Mayor Protim Nevels.
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to city manager Mike Lan for his comments about how hard the staff's been working. I wanted to especially shout out our community development department. They have been working tirelessly with all the trash pickup efforts and all the delays and, and things like that. I wanted to call out Louis Rahill for specifically addressing dozens of citizens' specific concerns that they're having with their routes. I've received a ton of positive feedback because of his direct actions and the entire department and, and staff there, so I just wanted to give those guys some special recognition. They are the unsung heroes of this community that make a lot of good things happen. I think I've heard it as the Department of No sometimes called, but they do so many great things for this community, and they are, they don't get the praise that they deserve, so I just wanted to make sure we gave them special recognition.
Thank you. Any other public service announcements? Seeing none, there was no necessary action from executive session, so therefore, being no further business before this, council, we are adjourned at 8:01 PM.